At this time, I would like to call our October 6, 2025 Wayne County Board of Education's meeting to order, please. I need a motion for us to go into closed session.
So.
Tommy? Second.
Oh, Tommy.
You're supposed to keep track of the head.
I'm sorry. Y'all let me go second. I won't pay attention, I'm sorry. I move that we go into closed session to discuss confidential personnel matters as provided in North Carolina general statutes 143-318.11a1 and A6 and 115c-319 through 321. To discuss confidential student matters as provided in general statutes 143-318.11a1 and 115c-402. And to consult with our attorney for the Board of Education in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in North Carolina general statute 143-318.11a3. And to establish or to instruct the board staff or negotiating agents regarding the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body. And negotiate the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease consistent with NC general statute 143-318.11a5. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Cowan. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We are in closed session.
Great job, Mr. Smith. He's a great.
At this time, I would like a motion for us to come out of closed session, please.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. West, a second by Mr. Henderson. All those in favor of coming out of closed session, please raise your hand. We're out of closed session. At this time, Mr. Henderson, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, please everyone join me with the thing of the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I now need a motion for us to approve our agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Latham. Do I have a second? A second by Mr. West. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please raise your hand. Our agenda has been approved. All right, Mr. Henderson, Policy Committee report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Policy Committee did meet this month and we began reviewing the policies on summer special edition of the PLS, which is attached to this report. The Policy Committee is recommending that policies that we have listed on the agenda tonight as D through I be given for first read. We also noticed, we tabled one policy for clarification of an issue and that legal is currently reviewing that and will be bringing that back to us at our next meeting. We also need a motion to suspend Policy 2014 in order to approve a policy for immediate implementation and that would be Policies 3613. And this policy was a policy that was drafted by the district and it needed a total rewrite, so we're presenting that for immediate implementation.
Is that 3613 or 3631?
31, I'm sorry. My mistake.
Quickly, does anyone have any questions on policies, items D through I concerning the first read? If there's no questions, then we'll go into our voting motion or board action. All right, as Mr. Henderson did state, the old Policy 3631 needs to be rescinded so that we can replace it with the rewrite, our new Policy 3632. So let's take a look at item 4A first. It did come out of committee for us to rescind this, so we do not need a second. Do I have all of those in favor of rescinding the old Policy 3631, please raise your hand? We are unanimous. Now to implementation, Policy 3631, our new policy for immediate implementation after this. All those in favor of accepting our new Policy 3632 to rewrite?
3631.
I'm sorry.
We need to suspend.
We got to move to suspend the policy. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we need to suspend the policy to allow this to be passed on first read. What is that number, please?
2014.
Sir?
2014.
2014, so I need a motion.
10, 2014.
And the motion has already come from committee, too.
The motion came from committee, okay, to suspend that policy. So to suspend the policy to allow us to pass this on first read, if you agree, please raise your right hand. All right, that policy has been suspended. Now to vote to implement the new Policy 3631, came from committee. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Very good, unanimous. All right, Mr. Henderson, anything else?
That will do it for the moment.
All right, policy's got it rolling. Okay, all right, Curriculum Instruction Committee report, Mr. Folk.
I was not here, however, Curriculum and Instruction meeting, as I understood it, was the shortest in history because what you have before you is curriculum instruction purchase orders and contracts as the only item on the agenda. A motion was made by the other two members and seconded to approve those purchase orders and contracts and they are item D on your agenda, so no motion is needed or seconded.
Okay, all right, so therefore, everyone had a chance to take a look at that. All those in the favor of approving the purchase orders and contracts that came from the Curriculum Instruction Committee, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, Facilities Report, Mr. Sanders.
Facilities Committee report, September 15, 2025, the Facilities Committee met on September 15, 2025. A motion to approve the following items for the October 6, 2025 board meetings. First item was softball outing for Wayne School of Engineering, Goldsboro High School. Second was support services purchase orders. Third was fire panel at the old Fremont Stars Elementary School. Additionally, the Facilities Committee received updates and information and/or discussed the following items, Seven Springs Sewer Agreement and school street, school property.
Okay, all right, so we did get the softball outing coming for Goldsboro High School and the Wayne School of Engineering. It did come from committee, so all those in favor of item 4F, please raise your hand. We are unanimous, very good. We did have one item, item 4G for the purchase orders and that came from Dr. Hales about a bowler contract, so that would be item 4G. All those in favor of the support service PO?
Question.
I'm sorry?
I got.
Yes, sir, please.
Regarding these bowlers, is this for bowlers all across the county or for all the schools? Or can you explain a little bit on this preventative measure?
Yeah, this is our third year of a contract for these bowlers and it is across the district. Okay, any other questions? If none, then all those in favor, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. All right, the next two items, items H and I, did not go through committee, so Dr. Hales, if you would, please.
That is correct. I have a request, Misfashion and Child Nutrition to replace two serving lines and a dish machine at Southern Wayne High School.
Okay. And we see the documentation.
The cost of the two serving lines was $61,552.99 and then the dish machine itself was $37,186.36 and child nutrition funds will be used for that.
So did you only get one bid for the dish machine?
Yes, one bid. The others did not, I believe, did not show up.
No, I'm responsible.
If I'm reading that correctly.
Okay, all right, I need a motion for us to accept the purchase of some cafeteria equipment for Southern Wayne High School.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. West. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Henderson. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. All right, Carver Heights Cafeteria Equipment, sir, item I. All right, again, Carver Heights, outside freezer unit. Accepted bid was $52,525. Again, child nutrition funding would be used. Okay, do we have any questions on this cafeteria equipment?
Outside freezer unit, what does that mean exactly?
It's large enough, you've got to put it outside the door.
Oh.
Can't go inside.
Padlocked.
Gotcha.
We got two bids on this.
That's the outside, I understand.
Outside, yeah.
Outside what?
Outside. All right, if we have no other questions, I need a motion to accept this.
So moved.
Oh my, okay, I got, okay, Mr. Latham made the motion, Mr. West seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right.
Thank you all.
Very good, okay, Mr. Winks, are you up for item J, the MOU?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Witchard. We're asking for your approval of a renewal of our current MOU between Wayne County Public Schools and the Colleges of Health Sciences at St. Louis University. Our current agreement expires 1/4/26. This did have legal review on 9/18.
All right, thank you, sir. If everyone's had a chance to take a look at this, I need a motion for us to accept this MOU. I got a motion by Mr. Henderson and a second by Mr. West. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, Facilities Report, Mr. Sanders.
Facilities Committee report, September 15, 2025, the Facilities Committee met on September 15, 2025. A motion to approve the following items for the October 6, 2025 board meetings. First item was softball outing for Wayne School of Engineering, Goldsboro High School. Second was support services purchase orders. Third was fire panel at the old Fremont Stars Elementary School. Additionally, the Facilities Committee received updates and information and/or discussed the following items, Seven Springs Sewer Agreement and school street, school property.
Okay, all right, so we did get the softball outing coming for Goldsboro High School and the Wayne School of Engineering. It did come from committee, so all those in favor of item 4F, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. Very good. We did have one item, item 4G for the purchase orders and that came from Dr. Hales about a bowler contract, so that would be item 4G. All those in favor of the support service PO?
Question.
I'm sorry?
I got.
Yes, sir, please.
Regarding these bowlers, is this for bowlers all across the county or for all the schools? Or can you explain a little bit on this preventative measure?
Yeah, this is our third year of a contract for these bowlers and it is across the district.
Okay, any other questions? If none, then all those in favor, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. All right, the next two items, items H and I, did not go through committee, so Dr. Hales, if you would, please.
That is correct. I have a request, Misfashion and Child Nutrition to replace two serving lines and a dish machine at Southern Wayne High School.
Okay. And we see the documentation.
Yeah, the cost of the two serving lines was $61,552.99 and then the dish machine itself was $37,186.36 and child nutrition funds will be used for that.
So did you only get one bid for the dish machine?
Yes, one bid. The others did not, I believe, did not show up.
No, I'm responsible.
If I'm reading that correctly.
Okay, all right, I need a motion for us to accept the purchase of some cafeteria equipment for Southern Wayne High School.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. West. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Henderson. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. All right, Carver Heights Cafeteria Equipment, sir, item I. All right, again, Carver Heights, outside freezer unit. Accepted bid was $52,525. Again, child nutrition funding would be used. Okay, do we have any questions on this cafeteria equipment?
Outside freezer unit, what does that mean exactly?
It's large enough, you've got to put it outside the door.
Oh.
Can't go inside.
Padlocked.
Gotcha.
We got two bids on this.
That's the outside, I understand.
Outside, yeah.
Outside what?
Outside. All right, if we have no other questions, I need a motion to accept this.
So moved.
Oh my, okay, I got, okay, Mr. Latham made the motion, Mr. West seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right.
Thank you all.
Very good, okay, Mr. Winks, are you up for item J, the MOU?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Witchard. We're asking for your approval of a renewal of our current MOU between Wayne County Public Schools and the Colleges of Health Sciences at St. Louis University. Our current agreement expires 1/4/26. This did have legal review on 9/18.
All right, thank you, sir. If everyone's had a chance to take a look at this, I need a motion for us to accept this MOU. I got a motion by Mr. Henderson and a second by Mr. West. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Latham, Finance Committee report, sir.
Hey, Finance Committee, all the members were present with Mr. West sitting in for Mr. Sanders. Minutes of the previous meeting were unanimously approved. One finance purchase order for a public consulting group was briefed by Ms. Rouse and approved for the approval of the full board today. Dr. Rouse briefed the CNI purchase orders and contracts. We approved them and then deferred them to the CNI Committee, which has already been approved by the board. Ms. Rouse reviewed the donations and Mr. Smith and Ms. Rouse outlined the information only for the RFP, for the district-wide phone refresh and I understand we'll be getting a further update on that. So, other than that, final comments from myself, Mr. Henderson, and we adjourned at 10:18, so.
All right.
Didn't take very long.
Okay, we do have coming from the Finance Committee, one purchase order, item I. All those in favor of this contract coming through Ms. Emerson, please raise your hand. Did I say?
That's L.
I'm sorry, item L. Forgive me. We voted on item L, purchase order contract. I'm not sure I picked the option while we go. All right, very good. We now need to move to the donations. It came from committee, therefore we do not need a motion. All those in favor?
I would like to say one thing about that. The month was an amazing month for donations from the local community. Between the non-monetary and monetary donations, we had over $21,000 of donations to the school system for this past month and I'd just like to say thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Can I ask one question about that? What was the $10,000 donation, Fidelity Charitable Conto Fund? Looks like it was for a CDSP, Holly Herring, EC CDSP.
That is a check that is received annually, I believe, from that family that goes to the Edgewood School.
Oh, okay, the Gray family, okay, yep, okay.
So that is just a remarkable.
Yep, absolutely.
Family for their support of our school system every year.
Yep, Randy Gray?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, so it did come from committee, so we need to vote. All those willing to accept our donations, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. Very good. We do have, at this time, we do have one person who wishes to speak before the board.
Public comment guidelines, the Wayne County Board of Education recommends comments for our parents, students, and community. The public comment period is open to members of the public, including parents and students. Avoid compliments, concerns, or complaints about performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the education program, or school facilities. Each person is granted three minutes for his or her presentation. The portion of the meeting is for board to hear matters of interest from the public, however obscene, vulgar, or profane statements. As statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threaten to the orderly operation of the meeting should not be permitted. An organization or delegation representing the same topic is encouraged to select.
Yeah, this is our third year of a contract for these bowlers, and it is across the district.
Any other questions? If none, then all those in favor, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. All right, the next two items, items H and I, did not go through committee. So Dr. Hales, if you would, please.
That is correct. I have a request, Miss Fashion and Child Nutrition, to replace two serving lines and a dish machine at Southern Wayne High School.
Okay. And we see the documentation.
Yeah, the cost of the two serving lines was sixty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-nine cent. And then the dish machine itself was thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-six cent, and child nutrition funds will be used for that.
So did you only get one bid for the dish machine?
Yes, one bid. The others did not, I believe, did not show up.
No, I'm responsible.
If I'm reading that correctly.
Okay. All right, I need a motion for us to accept the purchase of some cafeteria equipment for Southern Wayne High School.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. West. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Henderson. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. All right, Carver Heights cafeteria equipment, sir, item I.
All right, again, Carver Heights, outside freezer unit. Accepted bid was fifty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Again, child nutrition funding would be used.
Okay, do we have any questions on this cafeteria equipment?
Outside freezer unit, what does that mean exactly?
Uh, it's large enough, you gotta put it outside the door.
Oh.
Yeah, can't go inside.
Padlocked.
Gotcha.
We got two bids on this.
That's the outside, I understand.
Outside, yeah.
Outside what?
All right, if we have no other questions, I need a motion to accept this.
So moved.
Oh, my, okay, I got, okay, Mr. Latham made the motion, Mr. West seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right.
Thank you all.
Very good, okay. Mr. Winks, are you up for item J, the MOU? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, Dr. Witchard. We're asking for your approval of a renewal of a current MOU between Wayne County Public Schools and the Colleges of Health Sciences at St. Louis University. Our current agreement expires one four twenty-six. This did have legal review on nine eighteen.
All right, thank you, sir. If everyone's had a chance to take a look at this, I need a motion for us to accept this MOU.
So moved.
I got a motion by Mr., Mr. Henderson and a second by Mr. West. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We are unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Latham, Finance Committee report, sir.
Hey, Finance Committee, all members were present with, Mr. West sitting in for Mr. Sanders. Minutes of the previous meeting were unanimously approved. One finance purchase order for a public consulting group was briefed by Mr. Rouse and approved for the approval of the full board today. Dr. Rouse briefed the CNI purchase orders and contracts. We approved them and then deferred them to the CNI Committee, which has already been approved by the board. Ms. Rouse reviewed the donations, and Mr. Smith and Ms. Rouse outlined the information only for the RFP, for the district-wide phone refresh, and I understand we'll be getting a further update on that. So, other than that, final comments from myself, Mr. Henderson, and we adjourned at ten eighteen, so.
All right.
Didn't take very long.
Okay, we do have coming from the Finance Committee, one purchase order, item I. All those in favor of this contract coming through, Ms. Emerson, please raise your hand. Did I say?
That's L.
I'm sorry, item L. Forgive me. We voted on item L, purchase order contract. I'm not sure I picked the option. All right, very good. We now need to move to the donations. It came from committee. Therefore, we do not need a motion. All those in favor.
I would like to say one thing about that. The month was an amazing month for donations from the local community. Between the non-monetary and monetary donations, we had over twenty-one thousand dollars of donations to the school system for this past month. And I'd just like to say, thank you very much for the commitment.
Absolute, thank you.
Can I ask one question about that? What was the ten thousand dollar donation? Fidelity Charitable Conto Fund? Looks like it was for a CDSP, Holly Herring, EC CDSP.
That is a check that is received annually, I believe, from that family that goes to the Edgewood School.
Oh, okay, the Gray family, okay, yep, okay.
So that is just a remarkable.
Yep, absolutely.
Family for their support of our school system every year.
Yep, Randy Gray?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right, so it did come from committee, so we need to vote. All those willing to accept our donations, please raise your hand. We are unanimous. Very good. We do have, at this time, we do have one person who wishes to speak before the board.
Public comment guidelines, the Wayne County Board of Education recommends comments for our parents, students and community. The public comment period is open to members of the public, including parents and students. Avoid compliments, concerns or complaints about performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the education program or school facilities. Each person is granted three minutes for his or her presentation. The portion of the meeting is for board to hear matters of interest from the public, however obscene, vulgar or profane statements. As statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting should not be permitted. An organization or delegation representing the same topic is encouraged to select one individual to make a presentation on its behalf. In certain cases of emergency, information received during a presentation would be generally not be acted upon at the time of the receipt, but will be considered for potential action in the normal course of business. Individuals with concerns or complaints are strongly encouraged to initially seek a response from the school district official, response before the program or facility, or from the superintendent. Looks like we have one speaker today, Ms. Jennifer Brown, and her topic is buses as strategies for transportation.
Hi.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Brown.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Jennifer Brown, and I have two daughters here in Wayne County Public Schools at Northeast Elementary. I'm a proud product of Wayne County Public Schools, including Northeast. Thank you for giving me a minute of your time to talk about this important issue at the center of our children's education. Since entering the school system in twenty twenty-two, we have witnessed the increasing obstacles and troubles with the bus transportation to and from school. When our oldest was in kindergarten, we woke up daily to messages of bus cancellations and parents being notified an hour prior that they needed to find a way for their child to get to school. We have watched this evolve into tables and calendars posted weekly of what buses will be running and what times. It seems in years past, schools have had these challenges, but they were met with creative solutions in order to ensure the children within our communities were able to get to school. This year, however, it seems this approach has met a hard stop. Parents were notified before the school year began that school time adjustments were made at elementary and high school to help address the bus crisis and that fewer buses would be operating. These time adjustments have only negatively impacted parents who have children at both elementary school and high schools, with the start times being at the same time. So furthermore, the new start changes did not address the crisis nor have ample operating buses. The parents were informed that this bus transportation to and from school is not a right or a guarantee, and that parents would still be required to get their kids to and from school, no matter issues with the bus transportation. Whereas in years past, bus transportation issues have been taken into account for attendance, tardies, whatnot. This year, there's been firm communication that that is no longer the case, and parents have received almost weekly reminders that excessive absences are punishable by law to parents. Wayne County Schools have been identified as struggling to meet standards. Recent report cards for schools did show some growth, but still show lots of areas of improvement across the board. My concern begins with, how do we help these children meet their education standards if we cannot even get them to school? How is the county board making our students' education their priority while conveying this defeatist attitude of, this is a problem, but it's your responsibility to get your kid to school? Parents have been told it's not a requirement, and that is correct. The State Board of Education policy does state districts may offer transportation, but we all know that state policy was written for bigger urban areas where schools are within walking distance and there's public transportation. We do not. Our county is large and full of wonderful, large farming families, and our schools are spread out, most all schools cannot be walked to, nor is there public transportation. Wayne County Schools needs to provide equitable bus access for every student so that they can receive an equitable education and fulfill Wayne County's beliefs that the education of children is a priority and is the responsibility of the entire community, and the education is a sound investment for the society in the key, which comes directly from your website. I really would love to be able to do my last thing, please, because I actually had, like, I actually had brainstorming ideas. I apologize.
Thank you, but we'll be willing to take a look at those, but the time has completed. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is a particular issue that has not only plagued Wayne County Public Schools, but districts all across North Carolina and all across the fifty states. The issue in most cases comes down to an economical factor. Drivers are increasingly factoring where they can make more money in terms of whether driving a yellow bus or whether they can drive commercially and other ventures and venues. We have made great strides with filling routes in certain areas. Certain areas of the district remain persistently stubborn in terms of filling them. I take no pride in that. Every bus I know that does not run is impacting families. When I first came to Wayne County Public Schools, I had to find a way to get my child to and from school. Many times it involved me altering my day in terms of my lunch schedule and using it to pick up my child from school. Bottom line is, I had to find a way. And I don't like that parents are having to face that particular burden. Our entire leadership team is looking at ways to make this better and easier for parents. I will say, the board's recent adoption of a dual responsibility policy for employees or professionals to obtain their CDLS is beginning to bear fruit. That particular policy is like a seed that's been planted. It's not going to be noticeable immediately, but the impacts are beginning to bear fruit. Just this past week, Mr. Lee informed me, I believe we had thirteen that are in a bus training class that were waiting to come out. That will be a huge number of drivers that we will be able to put on routes. I am keenly aware of the situation at Northeast. We did modify the schedule so that we can have drivers running double-tiered routes. Believe it or not, our situation would be much worse if we had not enacted that particular policy. I continue to look for creativity from superintendents anywhere and everywhere that are sharing ideas. If a parent has an idea that we may not have thought of, I am open to hearing from you and would love to meet with you. Please feel free to contact the office, and I will make time to sit down with you at your convenience to hear your concerns, to make this better for our children and for our parents. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we do have a board spotlight. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, would Wayne County Public Schools' payroll specialist, LaShonda Artist, please come forward? I'd also like to invite any members of her immediate family and the District Finance Department to join her, or any other friends and family that Ms. Artist would like to come forward with her for this special event.
Ms. Artist recently completed the North Carolina Association of School Business Officials, or NCASBO School Business Administration, School Business Management Academy Specialist Certification. Established in two thousand and six, the NCASBO School Business Management Academy develops future school business leaders through a comprehensive training program in the area of school finance. The academy promotes the highest professional and ethical standards of school business management practices for North Carolina schools. Offers practical information that will help school business officials succeed and excel in their employment, and advances professionalism of school business officials to help ensure current or prospective business officials have a base knowledge about laws, regulations and procedures for the ultimate benefit of the students of North Carolina's public school system. Obtaining the academy's director certification demonstrates a dedication to the school business. Participants must complete sixteen courses with assessments. The curriculum consists of courses in accounting, financial management, law, including legal responsibilities, and business office operations. The NCASBO certification program is endorsed by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, the North Carolina School Boards Association, and the North Carolina School Association of School Administrators. In February, Ms. Artist will be recognized for earning the NCASBO School Business Management Academy Specialist Certification at the twenty twenty-six Annual NCASBO Conference. Ms. Artist, on behalf of the board, we congratulate you for this professional achievement and for all that you do to support our school district's finance office as a payroll specialist. And if I also might add, Ms. Artist is one of the nicest people that you will ever meet. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, all right.
Thank you for working so hard for Wayne County Public Schools, keeping us on the right track. Making sure our P D's line up.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
What's Rouse coming through the line for?
What?
Just wondering why Rouse was coming through the line for. Very good. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. All right, we are now up to item seven on our agenda, the consent agenda.
A consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials are not items on routine business or have been thoroughly discussed in committee meetings open to the public and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item when a consent agenda. If a board member wants separate consideration of any item, it may be removed by request.
All right, everyone's had a chance to review the consent agenda. I do need a motion for us to accept the consent agenda with keeping the minutes closed from closed session on July seventh and September eighth.
So moved.
Okay, I have, I have a motion by Mr. Folk, a second by Mr. West. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Very good, we are at the end of that part. We're now up to our board member and superintendent comments. Mr. Henderson, District Two.
Yes, and my comments may be a little wily here, and I'm gonna ask the board's indulgence on what I have to say, because it's been an issue that has been a serious concern for me over the last couple of weeks. And it deals with us going ahead and making preparation for the building of hopefully a new Brogdon Primary School. I would like to first thank the board members for your support for desiring to purchase land and build a new school to replace Brogdon Primary School. I would also like to give special thanks to our current board members, Chris West, Tommy Sanders, Del, Wade Latham, for their past and their present support for participating frequently in the reading program at Brogdon Primary School. They know about the concerns of safety and security at the school, including the traffic, the outside restrooms and the general condition of the school, which has classrooms dated back to the early nineteen fifties. I would also like to give grateful appreciation to Ms. Natal Nelson, principal and the staff of Brogdon Primary School, including the support staff, for working tirelessly and very hard to make that school as inviting as possible. They have worked hard to improve the aesthetics and the learning environment for our, for our children. And in my opinion, those staff members are going far and beyond to ensure that the school is as safe and as secure as it possibly could be. I'd also like to give special thanks to my commissioner, Commissioner Antonio Williams, for the discussions that we have had on his unwavering support for a new school to replace the existing Brogdon Primary School. He continues to advocate with his comrades for this school, as, as did our former commissioner, the Honorable Ed Cromartie. And in two thousand and seventeen, several of our commissioners, including Mr. Cromartie, Mr. Daughtry, and Mr. George Acock, toured Brogdon Primary School, along with touring Fremont School, Rosewood School, and even Meadow Lane. Several of our board members also toured along with them and were given an opportunity to discuss the issues and concerns as we observed them during that tour. And during that time, it appeared to me that there was some urgency in replacing Brogdon Primary School. But this brings me to the issue of whether we should buy the land adjoining the school or somewhere in the area, or building a new school. I'm torn on that issue of buying land or joining, adjoining the property to build a new school. And many of you may question why the uncertainty, but let me explain. I think it would be a great purchase for us if we could find land there. Why? One reason is because I am a former student at that school. I attended what was then called Dudley Elementary School from nineteen sixty-two to nineteen sixty-nine. Even my older siblings and my younger siblings attended there until integration. Some of the classrooms at that time are still being used today. However, in many cases, you must walk through one classroom to get to another classroom to, to meet a child. Can you imagine the number of interruptions and distractions this might cause for a teacher trying to provide instruction to her class? Does these situations add to the reasons why we might consider Brogdon Primary School a low-performing school? Secondly, as many of you are aware, my grandchildren and now my great-grandchildren attend that school, or attended or is attending that school currently. My oldest grandson, Isaiah Henderson, who was loved by the administration and staff at that school. In two thousand and eleven, he was diagnosed with Angioblastoma, a very fast-growing cancer that affected his brain and his spinal cord. He died from that cancer in two thousand and thirteen. As a tribute to his memory, the staff purchased a Bradford Pear tree and requested it to be planted on the school grounds. Dr. Yolanda Glassby served as principal of the school at that time, and she granted the staff's request. I, along with Isaiah's classmates and some of his, some of the other staff, planted that tree near the entrance to the third and fourth grade wings. That tree is still standing there today, and it's flourishing. It is a beautiful tree, and it helps to provide shade on those hot, hot days during the summer. And I also recognize there will be some cost savings if we were to build on this property. There are several newer buildings like the Cafeteria Gym and other buildings there. We not, we would not have to invest in sewer and water because it's currently available. The purchase of adjoining land would allow for expansion and necessary renovation. This would also allow for us to design a better traffic pattern and allow us to eliminate or at least deter some of the major traffic problems observed during morning and afternoon school release. These are only a few of the positives I have noted with Brogdon, with purchasing the land. However, I'm not necessarily convinced that this is enough to ensure that the school be built on that location. And now that I've expressed some support for the purchase of the adjoining land, I would also like to discuss the building of a new school in, in the southern area if we do not build at Brogdon Primary. As one of the longest-serving members of this board, I can remember the processes and the procedures that we used in planning for the new Fremont School. We reviewed much data, we conducted numerous studies, and we held several town halls to educate the public every step of the way. We established several committees to investigate numerous issues which may impact the decision that we would make. We knew of the overcrowding that was occurring in the northern end of the county, particularly at northeast and northwest, and, and we wanted, and decided that some redistricting may need to occur. We hired consultants to help with this process. We met with county officials to discuss housing trends, the development of new housing subdivisions, and get, and got feedback on our plans, after which we were able to select a site for the new Fremont School. I know that there has been growth in the southern area of the county. We have seen reports of overcrowding in Brogdon Primary, Grandtham School, and even We have seen reports of overcrowding in Brogdon Primary, Granton School, and even Spring Creek School. In conversations with Principal Nelson, I have been informed of the growing size of our kindergarten and first-grade classes. We have noticed that the average class size have gone up to about 150 students per kindergarten and first-grade levels. We have also noted there has been some discussion about trying to get a consistent grade-level configuration around the county, meaning that we would like to see all grade-level schools configured the same way. Pre-K to fifth grade in the elementary schools, sixth to the eighth grade in our middle schools, and nine to 12 for our high schools. This possible configuration will require that the fifth grade be added to the enrollment numbers at Brogdon Primary School. With this in mind, we could possibly be looking at a Brogdon Primary School housing anywhere from 800 to 1,000 students. The current capacity at Brogdon Primary School is only 600. I also noted that we have begun to see growth in the southern area. As previously mentioned, reports show that there is overcrowding in the other elementary schools in this area. This leads me to believe that much of the effort that was given to the northern end of this county should also be given to the southern end of this county. I have copies of all the work, including reports that were developed at that time, and I have now shared those with our superintendent and our board chair. Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully request that this board follow the previous practices used during the planning for Fremont School. I would also like to request that we appoint a new committee to work with Dr. Witcher to help expedite this process, for we know that this could take a couple of years or more to complete. I think it would also be wise to inform the commissioners that we, as a board, are unanimous in our solid support and commitment for making a school in the southern end of this county a reality within the next three years. Mr. Chairman, I would also like to applaud you, Vice Chairman Sanders, and Dr. Witcher in trying to establish the five-by-five committee to work with the commissioners to address this issue. You all have tried to bring them into earlier conversations to make this happen, but like I am reminded at an old scene, you can take a horse to the water, but you can't make him drink. That's what I feel has been the situation thus far. As a board, let us make a commitment of building a new school in the southern end of the county our focus and our priority. This is my plea to you all. Talks cheap, let's make it happen. Thank you for the efforts that you showed today. And with this, Mr. Chairman, I know that this is a lengthy comment. I would like to ask that this be entered into the record as my comments today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cowan from District 3.
No comment.
Mr. Foke, District 5.
No comment.
Mr. Latham, District 6.
No further comment.
District 1, Mr. West.
No comment, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sanders, at large.
No comment. As District 4 representative, I would like to take a moment to publicly thank the First PX Church from Mount Olive for providing lunch for us today, earlier today, and thank them for coming and for the excellent prayer that was said on our behalf by Pastor Jeff Dale. Jeff Dale, thank you. Thank you. Dr. Witcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So proud of Ms. Artis and her accomplishment, being recognized tonight. She is just a real ray of sunshine for the finance team and her hard work and effort. And it's always good to see someone make advancements in their career and what they're able to do for us to be able to recognize that. I'd just like to thank this board for your support. This district has made tremendous progress. I was out speaking this past week at a community organization event, and when I share the good news about the progress this district's made, from 91st place out of 115 school districts to 62nd, when I share the number of schools that we had that were low-performing schools in this district, now down well over half of where we once were, it's tremendous progress that we've made in a short period of time. And our school principals are to be commended, our teachers, and to your point, Pastor Dale and his church, our community partnerships are getting stronger. People are returning and reinvesting in their traditional public schools here in Wayne County. As I tell folks, nobody does it better than traditional public schools. And our district is on the move, our district is making great strides, but we're not going to rest on all arrows. We're going to continue to work hard to make great advancements for our children's sake in this community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If we have nothing else, then I need for us to.
So moved.
A motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Henderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a joint motion between Latham and West. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We are adjourned. Thank you.